Morning, everybody. Today is Monday, June 8th. It's Election Day. We are holding a special meeting this morning to get some paperwork out of the way. We're going to deal with outdoor dining applications and some other things. But we want to get the dining applications out there as quickly as we can because officially across the state they're opening up today and we want to have all the paperwork in place. So we're meeting today. The regular board, the new board, as we know it after 8:00 PM tonight, will meet again officially on the 16th of June, unless there's something that comes up in the meantime. So with that said, let us begin as we always do with a pledge of allegiance to our flag, followed by a silent moment of prayer or meditation. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Please be seated. We have five items on our agenda this morning. The first one on our agenda is outdoor dining application approvals. And I believe everybody has the applications in front of them. There have been some additional ones, Broadway Pizza, Tazos, and Crystal Brewing. You may not have those applications, but we have them here at the Town Hall. Mr. Mizuko, do you want to start off with anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to the Board's interim regulations on outdoor dining and authority given to the Board as licensing authority by the Governor, we have submitted to restaurants to send in outdoor dining applications. We've received about 19 of them. The internal, it was an interdepartmental review that began this Saturday for a majority of these applications. And I really do want to give credit to the town staff that came in Saturday to review. We had staff from planning, police, liquor enforcement, and safety, health, public works, inspections, fire, the general manager's office, the selectmen's office. About 11 employees came in on Saturday, worked all day on Saturday, went through the applications, discussed different challenges and different, any issues with them, moved them through to be approved. Site visits, we went out and visited almost all these applications where we felt we needed to have a visit. The building inspector had a particular concern with the application. He went out and visited that building. If the health department had a concern, they went out and visited that restaurant. So the actual review process of these applications has been far more extensive than we would normally have under other circumstances. So they are ready to go. We do know that there's some pedestrian areas that we'll need to block off to maintain pedestrian access along Washington Street and a few other areas. We're going, our goal is to have that all ready by the end of the week. We just have to get some Jersey barriers in place. That'll take some time, but the restaurants are ready and we're looking to get them up and running as soon as possible. And again, it was a little complicated, such a wide department, interdepartmental view with so many interests with different departments, but we're able to bring it together. It's been reviewed by all the different departments and have been approved for, and ready for your approval. And the Board of Health and other departments will have to conduct site visits in the assembly and both compliance and to make sure that we're meeting the ever-changing health regulations that the state continues to take to us. So this is not, they've been approved and we never look at it in, over the course of the next week or two, really throughout the summer, you to visit these sites, make site visits, and work with the businesses as needed on making any amendments that need to be made. You have, we have Ms. Mizuko from NHDL, as well as Gal from the Health Department, and Bernie.
Thank you. And before I turn it over to Mr. Howard, who has a question, I want to thank everybody that was here on Saturday and worked Saturday. We also had people in this office, the selectmen's office, working all day on Sunday to prepare all this information. So I want to thank all those people that came in and gave up their time to get this project up and running for the benefit of our general public. Mr. Howard, you had a question, sir?
Come on. Trying to avoid the phone calls to the house, but anyways, it hasn't been said as yet, so I'll say it. This is for outdoor dining only and to extend the alcohol to outdoors for those restaurants that have alcohol. So just for the people at home, so that they're aware, this is outdoor dining only, but it is available for you to take off. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. I think it's important to note, as you added, it is for outside alcohol sales also.
It's outdoor alcohol service for establishments with existing licenses. So there's no expansion of if you don't currently have a license, that's not involved. This is just for businesses with existing alcohol service licenses.
Good point. We don't want to confuse the public. These are for people that already has an AAB license, or a beer wine and cordial license. Other than that, it's strictly outdoor dining. Mr. Hajar, question please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question on, most of the applications have all the appropriate documentation is outlined in the cover letter of, of the health department's, you know, checklist, but some of them don't have it. So I'm just kind of wondering, before they're actually given approval, are they going to be required to submit everything to ensure that for consistency purposes, we have everything that is required for them to do what they want to do outside?
Yes, from a documentation standpoint, we mainly need insurance and the standard practice under statute in Massachusetts is we need that within 72 hours of them commencing operation.
So once they're out there, they have 72 hours to make sure that all paperwork is in place. Anything else on the board? Mr. Plasko.
Good morning, sir. I noticed, in looking over those applications, unless I couldn't read their descriptions and their plans properly, some of those with the alcohol don't indicate barriers containing people in those areas as is required by the ADCC regulation. Want to make sure that we do it to go over those requirements with them and enforce them. And also say that a couple of the establishments are already set up and running. I just saw Lewis's, Napa Tandies are all out there. They're very attractive looking, appealing, going to add some excitement to the town. I do have a concern with Lewis's, so I mentioned to the manager this morning, that we're not delaying getting over there on the town side of things because in controlling, again, because they have alcohol, no one can pass by that establishment on the sidewalk. And we haven't put up barriers or safety measures for the public to walk, or even no parking signs, so that people park there and then you come along and try to pass by that establishment, you have to go out in the middle of the street. We have to get to our side of these issues sooner than later. Thank you.
You are absolutely correct. And we're willing onsite inspection of every premises before anything moves forward from their locations. Anything else? Would I, I would entertain a motion to approve these if you're so inclined.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve in a second. On the motion, Mr. Hajar, or are you just raising your hand?
No, I was just going to say, can we be specific about the motion? It's related to Tony's, the gentleman's amended 6820 list.
Yes. According to all the applications, I have the phone. Correct, Mr. Maloney?
Right. Yes, that is correct.
So I have a motion in a second to approve, to approve rather. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So those have been approved and as we stated, there will be a final site review on all potential licenses as soon as we can get that done. The second thing on our agenda is the Town Hall elevator. And I think Mr. Mizuko can give us an update on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to let the board know, we are beginning the elevator project here in Town Hall technically as of tomorrow, so we will lose some of our ADA compliance for some time. Town Hall is still closed to the public as a result of the 19 precautions. We anticipate that persisting into the foreseeable future, both as we work to get this workspace, which has an old historic building, is a little bit more challenging to get up and running. We also are going to start seeing vacations now that the election is over. We've got to deal with that, make it a safe staffing level. And with COVID restrictions in place and the elevator being down, it's going to be a challenging couple, but we anticipate the elevator being down for roughly four weeks as we complete the rehabilitation project on the elevator.
For the board, anything? Well, I want to thank myself first of all. I want to thank everybody involved, yourself, Kathy, Connie, and whoever else may be involved in this project, waiting until the election is over. So I don't have to tramp up and down two or three flights of stairs every day to come in and out of this building. So thank you for that. Anything else, Mr. Mizuko?
No, just to let the board know that that project will be ongoing over the next several weeks.
All right, thank you, sir, for that. Number three, small business grant program. If you'd like to explain that to the people at home.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've identified some DHCD, which is the Department of Housing Development Funds that we have in our possession. They're to be used for economic development, business retention processes or programs. And we put together a small business grant program where small businesses with a physical commercial presence in the town of Norwood will be able to apply for up to $4,000 in funding to help assist, whether it's getting them back up and running, whether it's covering some lost payroll, or prior utilities, or initial stock to get up and running, restaurants to buy outdoor furniture and outdoor amenities. We have, we feel we can probably fund about $75,000 worth to the program with existing funds. There's other funds we've identified that we may be able to utilize. We're holding off on that until we get confirmation from the Department of Housing and Community Development. Businesses would apply, they would have to submit some paperwork, they'd have to show that they took a loss as a result of COVID-19. We would review the applications, get them turned around. It would be a lottery process because we do believe there'll be more desire than there is funds available. So everyone will be given a lottery number and we will record just pulling the lottery numbers, if you will, to award grant funding. Because again, we do anticipate more applications than there is funding available. The board has a copy of the actual application. We've tried to keep it fairly simple for businesses. We don't want to make it too onerous for them to be able to get a business grant. We are modeling on a program that the town of Acton did and Selectman Hajar and I spent some time working amongst ourselves and with the planning department to get the program and the application ready to go, and we believe it is. So we're seeking approval from the board to go ahead and approve the program and we'd be able to get that grant program out there and businesses in Norwood will be able to apply and potentially at least these 20 or so businesses would be able to receive grant funding down, help them get back up and running now that the economy's starting to open up.
Mr. Howard, you have a question?
Just a question about Mr. Chair. Tony, when will applications be available to the public?
They can be available to businesses as soon as tomorrow. We have the timeline written in. We actually can probably get them on the website today. And then there's an internal review process and our goal is to get this turned around within a couple of weeks. This is, like a lot of the projects we're undertaking, we're looking to get this as quickly as possible.
Where on the website will they be, Mr. Mizuko?
It'll be on the Planning and Economic Development website, planning's page on the website.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. And that would be for an individual business with proper documentation of loss and so on, up to $4,000. But they capped on the entire project of possibly $75,000 all told.
Correct. And it's for small businesses, so it's businesses with less than $1.5 million in gross annual receipts. They have to be able to show a documented loss of revenue as a result of COVID, which we don't feel will be too difficult for any business. It is for businesses with, I believe, under 35 employees and they do need to have a physical commercial presence in the town of Norwood. There are some exclusions, businesses with more than six locations, so that would be a large national chain. And there's the employee restriction, the revenue restriction, as well as certain businesses that have been open all along or haven't really suffered a loss, wouldn't be eligible to apply. All those details are in the application. It is really designed for restaurants and retail that have been impacted by COVID-19.
Thank you. Mr. Plasko, you had something to add?
Yeah, a question. You, you mentioned the large organizations, national organizations, more than six not being eligible. But what about a national name that is a, a...
Locally owned franchise?
Yes, franchise, thank you.
And that's why we limited it to, they have to own less than six locations. So if you take a franchise, if it's just locally owned and they only own that one franchise, that's fine. We specifically changed the language to make sure that if somebody owns a local franchise, if that's the only one they own, or they own less than six, they're able to apply for it. Because you're right, you do have some, you know, Honeydew's an example where it's locally owned and operated. That's a national chain, but it's less than six locations is by that single owner. I don't know the ownership structure of the fast food restaurants in town, but as an example, somebody may own one McDonald's, they may own two McDonald's. If they own 30 of them, they'd be excluded, but if they only own one, even though it's a national brand, it's still only a locally, it's a single locally owned business. Pizza shops are the same thing. I don't know the ownership structure of our Domino's. Sometimes people own just one or two of those. That's a national chain. As long as they only own two or three of them or less than six, they're still eligible to apply.
If the board is to support this, I think we're supporting this, recognizing it for economic development and to help support these businesses get back on their feet. And, and that, man, we have a fund that we received from the Hampton Inn as part of a tip, a tip years ago. There's a small balance left to it. I'm not exactly sure what it is, might be 5,000, 7,000 or so. I wonder if it'd be appropriate to include that in your other funding sources to see how much you can stretch this out and kind of close out that account at the same time.
Sure, if you'd like to, we will get confirmation that that we can spend and we will add that to the fund. Again, we may be able to add other funds. There's CDBG program income that we're just waiting on approval to know that we can add to this program. So the number may be able to grow. The $75,000 number is what we've identified that we know with approval from DCHD, we can spend. If we find additional funds, we'd love to add them to it.
Anything else, gentlemen? Mr. Mizuko, did you want a letter, a vote of support for that?
Yes, because we're expending those DHCD funds, we would like the board to approve the grant program.
I'd like to have...
Move to approve.
Approve, Mr. Chairman.
And I have a second, and who gave me the second? Three of them. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
And the board votes aye. So that has passed. You have your, your support for that particular matter. Number four on our agenda is the police department contracts. There are two separate contacts, contracts rather, I'm sorry, collective bargaining agreements, if you will. One for the local IBPO, international brother of police officers, which represents the patrolmen. And then we have a known police officers' superiors union, which covers the, basically the sergeants, lieutenants, and so on. We had met earlier, last time we met, we met in some executive session to approve the contracts. We have not approved them publicly, and I'd like to make note of that right now. And I, I know it might be overkill, but take another vote to approve in public. Any questions on that? Okay, Mr. Mizuko?
Yeah, just for the, for the public and the, I know the board's aware, the normal process with any collective bargaining agreement is we first approve a MOA or a memorandum of agreement in an executive session. You then do the contract integration that gets approved and then the final step is an approval at a, at a meeting like this.
And we have reached that final approval stage. So I have a motion. Mr. Plasko?
Yes, sir. Motion to approve both the Norwood Police Officers Union and the IPO local 438 collective fighting agreement.
Second, I believe. Mr. Hajar, do you have something to add?
No. I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So that has been settled. The next thing on our agenda is discussion pending legislation regarding town meeting quorum. We also have with us Attorney David Hearn, who is our town moderator, to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Mizuko, would you like to start it off, please?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Mr. Chairman? You're...
We're having a discussion now on the town meeting quorum. And Attorney Hearn is here also to answer any questions we may have. Do you have anything to start with?
No, sorry, I'm having a little audio issue here, but I think I've, I think we've got the gist of what you were saying. The board has the authority in consultation and the approval of the moderator to reduce town meeting quorum. I think it would be prudent to do so. The reason being, we are looking at the option of whether we do an indoor town meeting or outdoor town meeting. Either way, if there's concern we're going to get quorum, we certainly wouldn't want to take any action and then not get quorum at town meeting. We have to get a budget passed and done. If we didn't do so, it's an incredible melting nightmare to continue to operate July and August. And even then, at some point, we still have to have town meeting come together and get the budget done. With all the preparation we've done, I think the appropriate thing would do to be would be to reduce the quorum. That way we can guarantee a successful town meeting, get the budget done and passed with, get our work done. And then we know that we'll be meeting in probably September, October, and November for bylaws to finish up some budget items, the capital plan and zoning. So that would be my recommendation to the board.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Hearn, are you with us?
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Anything to add on that?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments, if I could. This all came as a result of a, an act of the legislature that was signed by the Governor, I believe, late on Friday. And I'll leave it, I know the town council is on the, on the meeting also, but I have raised the question whether the board should put this off to its next meeting because the, the bill requires that you give not less than seven days. You have to publish notice of your intention to consider the adjustment of town meeting quorum requirements. You have to give, publish that notice not less than seven days before you take a vote on it.
Correct.
And you also have to provide adequate means of public access that will allow interested members of the public to clearly follow the deliberations of the board on making the quorum adjustment as the deliberations are occurring. So I don't know that this really can be discussed or certainly, my view is it ought to be put off till next, the next meeting of the board on the 16th. That would give you the seven days notice. It could be published and posted. I mean, I don't mean published in the paper. I'll leave it to council to tell us whether it has to be published in the paper, but I think it should be posted. Question of reducing the town meeting quorum, I don't disagree with that. This is a tool that the legislature has provided. I am sure that none of us would take it to be a reason to discourage participation in town meeting. We hope that as many of the town meeting members as possible will attend the town meeting on June 22nd. But this is a tool that allows the towns to reduce the quorum in order to be sure that the meetings are in fact able to be held and that the business that must be concluded is concluded at those meetings. So the idea, I think, is a good one, but certainly it's not intended to discourage people from attending. And we hope that we will have a number that approaches or even exceeds our normal quorum requirement, which is about 125. But if it turns out that people don't make the meeting or can't make the meeting, this type of reduction in quorum would help us by allowing us to, to actually hold the meeting and get the business taken care of. That's, that's my view and others may have a different view, but I express that view to Mr. Mizuko and Mr. Plasko this morning by email, some discussions we had.
Thank you, sir. You are correct on the seven day notice and we intend to do that at the conclusion of this meeting, put out the notice of the seven days. Attorney DeLuca, you have anything to add?
Yeah, no, I would reiterate Mr. Hearn's view of it. I have the copy of the, the legislation here available to us. It's section seven that is being referred to. And I think that it's clear that the legislature envisioned, despite all the efforts made by local town officials to keep their, to keep their town meetings intact, either in person, indoors or outdoors, or even remotely. There was still the persistent problem with, with the quorum requirement. Initially, it was a consideration that was given only to open town meetings, but this legislation now makes it very clear that a reduction in the quorum requirement, if voted by the Board of Selectmen in consultation with the town moderator, would be applicable to both open and representative town meetings. There is, of course, an opportunity for the public to be heard on this, and that's the, the purpose of the, the notice that you would provide. And insofar as the actual notice with, as members of our municipal, Mass Municipal Lawyers Association agree that, that, that the usual requirements of publication under the present circumstances is not feasible. So the recommendation consensus is for, for the, the notice to be published in your usual fashion by way of your agenda, that would be provided, website information, wherever it is that you post meeting notices would be enough to satisfy that requirement. The whole goal is to give the public, as best as you're able, notice of the fact that you'll be discussing that item and, and giving the public an opportunity to participate. I don't have a read as of yet, how many other municipalities may be taking advantage of the option. It's not required. It's something your board may consider and perhaps will have a better read on other municipal actions as we get closer to your meeting time. But the mechanics of it are laid out in, in section seven of the statute and it certainly provides an option for the town.
So I guess at this point, it would be best if nobody else has any questions to put this matter off until the next scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen, which will be the new board. And with that said, Mr. Plasko has a question.
Yeah, I was going to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we indicate our intent to discuss the possibility of using this section of the new law to lower the quorum at town meeting and that we post that for our next meeting, next Tuesday night, at a time to be determined by the chairman, that that notice be posted on our front page of our website today and then in all other normal notices of our meeting.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Maloney, you got a question?
Just, I'm happy to second the motion and just on the motion, Mr. Chairman. So the, the idea is that we post our intention. This is from the rest of the agenda, which we usually post on Friday prior to a Tuesday meeting. We're going to post today that we intend to include a consideration of this matter. Isn't that correct?
Yep. Correct.
Okay. And so, and so the other part of the, the other part of the equation is giving the public sufficient means by which to express an opinion. They can do that by emailing us, I guess. Is that fair enough?
I would imagine we're still going to have remote, not we, but you will still have remote meetings on the 16th going forward. There'll be an opportunity for them to come into that meeting, I would imagine. But there will be opportunities for the public to have a discussion on this, bring their comments forward.
All right. And just for Mr. DeLuca, as I, as I read this, we can post notice that we intend to consider it, as Mr. Plasko has proposed, and I have seconded. We do not have to include in the motion what a reduced quorum might be at that time, because we might decide not to reduce the quorum. Isn't that correct? We're just posting the notion, the motion.
That's right.
Posting our intention to discuss. Okay.
Yes, exactly right. Notice of its intention to consider.
Okay, all right.
Sir?
Yes, I think, Mr. Chairman, just for Dave Hearn and Dave DeLuca, the consideration of the quorum is, I understand that issue. What about the issue of whether it's going to be indoors, outdoors, both? Is that also part of the same discussion, or are we not moving anything other than inside the high school auditorium?
Yeah, that's not part of the legislation, not spoken to in the legislation.
Yeah, this morning, what you say to talk about a particular legislation reduction in quorum. Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
We are not going to meet in the auditorium. In all likelihood, we will meet in the gymnasium. The gymnasium is capable of holding over 180 seats on the floor of the gymnasium with six foot separation and room for tables. We may provide, and I'm working on this, and I have a meeting on this, this week with others involved in the planning, for, we may allow, provide for some outdoor seating also, but the indication that the clerk's office is getting is that so far, most of the people who have responded to a request for their view on the matter have indicated they will attend, they plan to attend the meeting in the gymnasium. So that's the current plan.
Thank you, sir, for that. And if I could just add, there'll apparently be adequate ventilation. There's two sets of double doors, I believe, that go to the outside that can be opened, and then we'll have fans in those doors to make sure there's constant circulation of the air within that room.
Mr. Chairman, we're not going to have fans because the Health Department has advised me that if we had fans going, we might be spreading if there were anybody coughing or whatever. We are, we do plan to have the exterior doors open, and there are several of them, more than two, as well as the windows in the indoor tract, the gallery upstairs. Those will be open for ventilation. And Ms. Reese has indicated that from the point of view of the Health Department, all of that would be helpful, and that this meeting can be conducted in a safe manner. The chairs are laid out. They may be, the layout might be revised a little bit later this week, but the point is that enough space can be provided to have each chair separated by at least six feet. Everybody will be asked to wear masks, everybody attending the meeting. We will have other equipment available. We'll have some masks available. We will be sending out a notification to the town meeting members of greater, of details about this and what they should expect coming to the meeting, but we're still firming up those details. And the Health Department, the Facilities Director for the Schools, Mr. Ricardi, is working on that. The Health Department's working on it. The clerk's office is weighing in on it, and I've been working on it. So I think we'll be able to hold a meeting indoors. It will be safe, and we'll be able to take care of the business of the town. But as I said, I am also considering providing some outdoor seating for those people who sincerely believe that they can't participate except by being outdoors. And we'll, we're working on those details. We're, two weeks from today is when we intend to meet. So we've got a little bit of time, but not a lot of time to firm up the details. Everybody will be given notice. So that's, that's the plan, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And I can't correct it on the fans, but in any event, there will be adequate circulation of air in that room. I think we can...
I thought that was a good idea until Sagal Reese told me it wasn't a good idea. So since she's our local expert on the matter, I defer to her on that.
And I would also, under that circumstance, but thank you for that. So I have a motion and a second to continue the discussion relative to the town meeting options till June 16th. Is everybody good with that?
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, that you'll post that today on our website, front page of our website. Mrs. Mulverhill will include it in all other notifications as well.
Mrs. Mulverhill was here in the room, and she stated that she will get that done immediately, if not sooner. So with that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananemos. Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So that's five to zero in the affirmative. And I see nothing else on the agenda unless somebody has something they want to bring up. If not, I will take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Howard, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When we, when we last met, and I was informed that we were having one more meeting, I saved the following item for this meeting, and that is, I'll try to be brief, but in my tenure here, we've had three different executive secretaries to our board. The first secretary, Mrs. Julia Liddy, I was a rookie. She helped me immensely getting my feet on the ground and becoming a salesman. At the time, having come off the Finance Commission, I thought I knew quite a bit about how to operate as a selectman. It wasn't quite that true. And she really helped me a lot. Not too long after, she retired, and she was replaced by Fran Jessel as our executive secretary. And now I had a little tenure on the board, but I did get additional polishing from Fran Jessel. And I so appreciate these two people. And then finally, our current executive secretary, Mrs. Christina Mulverhill, I want to thank you very much for doing what you do, taking the flak when people can't get at us directly, which comes in pretty regularly, as we all know. And I just want to thank you for everything that you've done for the board while I've been on it. And all three executive secretaries, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Howard, and thank you for those kind words of those three ladies. Anything else, Mr.? Here it comes. Mr. Plasko?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recognize that this meeting is one held at a time that we normally don't have a meeting, but if any of the public is indeed tuned into this meeting, one last reminder that today is Election Day, June 8. Polls are open till 8 o'clock this evening, and please get out and exercise your civic duty, participate in our town affairs. And I said my piece a little bit last week on the two outgoing members. I only want to reiterate, I thank you for your time, your service, and your friendship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko. And this meeting currently is being broadcast by Now Community Media Live. So that message should get out to the populace that they still have until 8 o'clock tonight, roughly eight and a half hours to get their voted, which is very important. So thank you for that, Mr. Plasko. Anything else? Repeat that?
Or should I adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn and a second. So for the last time, thank you all. Thank you for everything everybody's done for me over the last nine years and two months.
Domino the great.
So with that, the meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.